Our study is on page forty-four. The team remains shepherding the family. But our topic today is family discipleship, Christian marriage. Family discipleship, Christian marriage. Can I ask someone to read? The introduction there.
As they were sharing drinks, one of them brought up a discussion on marriage. Each young person had a comment when asked about their beliefs concerning marriage. The first said, "I don't think I will ever marry." The second person said, "If I cannot stand my spouse, I will just get a divorce." Yet another said, "I will make sure my wife submits to me in all things. She would only be seen, not heard." And the last person responded, "I know I cannot stay with one woman. I'm definitely going to be a polygamist." Worth of note is the fact that these young men and ladies were children of committed church members and leaders. So they went on with their discussion while tearing down the fabrics of marriage over a couple of drinks.
Thank you, Ma. So what do you think informs the views, the opinions and beliefs of this young people about marriage? What do you think gave them this kind of impression? This kind of understanding of marriage? Yes, Ma? Mama Igomina?
I would say are based on their family background.
Okay.
For their experience within their own household.
Okay.
Between their mom and their dad.
Okay, so seeing their parents as a practical example of what marriage represents. Yes, anybody else? Okay, Baba Karen.
It depends on their worldview.
What view?
Concerning marriage.
Okay.
In spite of the experiences in the past, but their worldview in general, it calls for that.
And of course worldview has a very profound influence on this generation. Yes, sir.
They have been influenced by their cultural background.
Cultural background. I mean, culture is fantastic, but you must check it out sometimes. Bishop, please offer.
Thank you, sir. Well, I think what may have influenced them is something like what I read sometimes. Somebody said, "The greatest danger the young generation face is a bad example set by the older generation." So when they looked at the people they have known, the people they have seen, and how their marriages have been going on, that may have informed their opinion.
Sure.
The elder, the older generation has set bad example for them.
Okay, I'll take one more about Neewi. Okay, Ogoni, I'll take you for the last.
As young people, I think they must have been influenced by what they see on social media.
Social media.
And also what they watch.
On Nollywood.
African magic.
On Nollywood and Hollywood and Bollywood and all the woods.
I think what influenced their decision is since they are all from Christian homes and church people, is the standard they are seeing, being displayed by the parents in the church.
Thank you, sir. And this is us to bounce it off you, I mean, you don't have to answer it. Is there anything that you are doing as a parent to wage off and to guard against this kind of thinking and mentality, even by your own children and by my own children? When we were kids, I'm sure you remember, we used to play mommy and daddy. And so we have, whatever it was then, so the girl is the mommy and the boy is the daddy. And you know, as you sit to watch, sometimes you find the boy comes and says, "You are stupid, where's my food? I'll beat you now." They are playing, but they are actually literally revealing the secrets of their daddy and their mommy. And it's true that our children too reveal our secrets, reveal our lifestyle. In other words, as they get out and the views and opinions and impressions they have concerning marriage, actually is the interpretation they've received from us. The next paragraph is for us to read that text. I would like us to actually read the text before we go to the next paragraph, which is 1 Peter chapter three, one to seven. Can we have wives? I want wives. Women are going to read the first six verses. If you read one verse, man, let another woman take the next verse and the next verse. So please just get ready, as many as would like to read. Women, the part that talks about you, one verse each, please.
Wives likewise be submissive to your own husbands, that even if some do not obey the word, they without a word may be worn by the conduct of their wives.
Okay, the next verse, somebody else.
Why they behold your just conversation coupled with fear?
Yes, verse three.
And the wearing of gold jewelry and fine clothes.
Rather, let it be the hidden person of the heart with the incorruptible beauty of a genite and quiet spirit, and quiet spirit, which is very precious in the sight of God.
Okay.
For after this manner, in the old time, the holy women also, who trusted in God, adored themselves, being a suggestion unto their own husbands.
As Sarah obeyed Abraham, calling him lord, whose daughters you are, if you do good and are not afraid with any terror.
Okay, let's have a man read the last verse.
Husbands, in the same way, considerate as you live with your wives and treat them with respect as the weaker partner and as heirs with you of the gracious gift of life, so that nothing will hinder your prayers.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Ma. So the head question, what does it say and mean? And our first question there is, what are the instructions to wives or to wife or to a wife in this passage? What is Peter urging wives to do to their husbands? And why is he asking it? When is he asking it? Where is he asking it? And how is he asking it? This is for wives, wives only. Men, you're not allowed to contribute on this question, yes. So our mothers, what is Apostle Peter asking you to do in this passage? How are you asked to do that? When are you expected to do it? And all of that, yes?
We should be subjects to our own husband.
To me?
Our own, my own husband, you.
We should be subject? Is that to be subjugated?
No.
Thank you.
Power brought under subjection.
Okay.
Your woman has power, but you bring it under subjection, under obedience.
Power.
Your husband.
Power brought under subjection. Brought under, maybe she likes the word obedience, but I like the word power. I want you to just think in your mind, when water is rushing out of a pipe with so much pressure and you want to stop it or cock it back or block it? Or if you want to open this wine, you know, there's a, yes, there's one particular wine like that. It has so much pressure. It's so much, it's, you know, under so much pressure. I get scared to open it, so I try to bring it out gradually, but even if you do that, it's still... So he says, the woman is power, right? And you have to know how to bring her so that you don't destroy her. Yes, another woman, please. Women is your time. I'm very gender sensitive. Yes, Ma, Mama Bangshin?
Reference our husband in a loving way, so that he can really gain himself and have the confidence.
Can you expand on that word reference? I want you to, you know, yes, just clarify it a little bit. Reference, what do you mean by reference your husband?
Like respect him.
Okay.
Give him all the confidence he needs and make him the man of your, of his character.
Reference your husband. I know of what they call reference library. And if you get, if you get... Okay, here. Reference. Okay, aha, you see, it's good to say it back so I can get it well. Yes, to venerate him. Yes. Another woman, yes, Ma? To submit to him.
To submit to him.
To submit to him. Amaze your forema, Ma somewhere.
To win the, to win them over without word but by conduct.
To win them over. Because it, not just to submit, but it goes on to say, to win them over. To win him over. Without words, but by the conduct, by the character, by the behavior, by the disposition of the woman. Yes? And that's Mama on the, on the coast, is that? Crowder, Crowder, yes, Mama Crowder.
Please permit me, sir, to read this message Bible.
Go on.
Thank you, sir. The same goes for you wives. Be good wives to your husbands, responsive to their needs. There are husbands who, indifferent as they are to any words about God, will be captivated by your life of holy beauty. What matters is not your outer appearance, the styling of your hair, the jewelry you wear, the cut of your clothes, but your inner disposition. Cultivate inner beauty, the gentle, gracious, kind that God delights in. The holy women of old were beautiful before God that way and were good, loyal wives to their husbands. Sarah, for instance, taking care of Abraham, would address him as my dear husband. You will be true daughters of Sarah if you do the same, unanxious and unintimidated.
What version is that?
Message Bible.
Wow, great, great. So?
I think it's so simplified and just tells us to be good to our husbands.
Yeah.
So good that you will convert them to be what God wants them to be.
So good that you can convert them even if they are not...
And it probably change them to be better.
To be better.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it's just that I hear that word, like you said, and that says, "My dear husband." I get to hear that mainly when I need to give some money. No, that's just a joke, actually. But those are the instructions, yes. Mama Archbishop, Oka.
We should love them, encourage them, and enjoy them as blessings from God.
Enjoy them as blessings from God, even if they are not born again. Enjoy him, even if he's not born again, even if he's not treating you nice and treating you kind. That's what, that's what the apostle says though, in marriage. Try to build a relationship, a fellowship, an association with that man who might be awkward, who might not care about you, who might not even love you. But I can imagine how hard and difficult all of that can be. But he says all the same. And when he says, even when they do not believe the word, it's not a line sense for us to advocate and to encourage young people to get married to unbelievers. And so there's no place where he says that if you marry an unbeliever, you can convert the person. Because no human being is a converter. It is the Holy Spirit who convicts and brings one to salvation. So I'm sure that is already established. The next question for men, what are the instructions? What is the apostle saying to men? What is Peter advising them to do to their wives or for their wives? We've seen that concerning the wives, what is asking them to do? And how tough and difficult that can be. What about for men? Men, now this is your time. What are we to do to our wives or for our wives? Baba Kenneth?
Thank you. The instruction is very clear. We should consider them.
Consider them.
Due consideration to them and to ensure that we relate with them with understanding that God has brought us together as co-heirs in this family of God. And then we should understand that without proper relationship, our prayers will not be hindered, will be hindered. So it's very, very clear that as a husband, I should love my wife, consider her, and get the knowledge that she is a child of God and God has given her to me and to live in peace so that our prayers will not be hindered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Baba Wari.
Yes, I also, we are reminded that out of our nine ribs, one was taken to make our wives. And the same ribs is also returned. And so, and that is why he's saying that we should not flaze muscle with them, that by creation, they are weaker than us. And so we should understand that relationship, that women will always be women.
Women will always be women.
And we should understand that we are men.
Yeah. One of my friends actually said something about women. He said, "Women are consistently inconsistent." So we would unpack that some other day. Okay, I have so many hands now. Okay, okay, the dean, we have to let the dean speak first. Adabada, I can see your hand at the back.
Thank you very much. I think it's important we decode this word, considerate.
Considerate.
Now, women are vulnerable.
Okay.
Bible said they are the weaker vessel. So whatever decision you are taking, whatever you are doing.
Yes, sir.
Be careful not to inconvenience them or harm them. Let them not feel pain that you are doing something. That is what considerate there means. Even if you are doing something, consider your wife. How will she feel in this thing that I'm doing or I want to do?
Your grace, sir, I once had the problem with my wife. And what was the problem? It was over a wedding invitation, which I got in the office for both of us. I looked at it and I got the date, put it somewhere, and I threw the card away. Then, as the day of the wedding was approaching, she said, "Where's the card?" I said, "No, what card? What do you need the card? All you need is just the date and the venue. I have it, I'm taking you there." And that was a big issue.
It should be.
And she talked, she talked, she talked, and I said, "I mean, you have the dates, the venue." Then she said, "The dress code." "I need to get ready. All you have to wear is your cassock and you are off. But I need to get a matching shoe, matching bag since that day, sir." Every wedding invitation I receive, I keep it for one year.
Thank you.
Adabada. And Baba Zaria, oh, so many of you. Baba Zaria, oh, Wari. Brief, 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 so we'll go through the next question.
We need to study them and tolerate our wives.
Tolerate.
We must tolerate them, sir.
Tolerate their excesses, is that?
Yes, because it's like Baba Wari said, it's just one rib out of so many. And so you should know that sometimes they behave like toddler. And so you must tolerate them.
Tolerate, tolerate them. Baba Zaria.
My lord, I just want to read, I want to read...
Neewi, spoke, sir.
My lord, I want to read the amplified version. The amplified version, which is very informative. "In the same way, you husbands live with your wives in an understanding way, with great gentleness and tact, with an intelligent regard for marriage relationship as would someone physically weaker. Since she is a woman, show her honor and respect as a fellow heir of the grace of life, so that your prayers will not be hindered or ineffective."
Live with them, live with her, with tact, with understanding, with carefulness, with consideration, yes, sir?
Yes, just to stress that understanding, treat her with understanding. I should treat my wife with understanding, aware of her needs.
Aware of her needs.
Her strengths.
Her strengths.
Her weaknesses.
Her weaknesses.
And even her goals and desires.
Even her goals and desires.
And I need all this so that I can possibly respond in the best way to her.
Okay, so the woman is not like a man, right? So her desires, her needs are different. Okay, so many hands, and I want us to move on, but it's exciting.
Thank you, sir. Fathers in God, why tell you that there are stages in life? When a lady gets married, particularly when children are yet to come.
Yes.
You can see the beauty, you can see appreciate the lady. But the moment, can you imagine? Sweet sixteen looking like your wife, isn't it? But the moment children start coming in, the same slim beauty becomes a fat horrible lady. But this you should know equally. Stages in life, seasons in life, there is a stage where women entered into menopause. Menopause challenges make so many women start misbehaving.
Baba, Baba Bada.
Please note this, note that. Note that. Menopause challenges most time makes them do what ordinarily they ought not to do. That is part of what, why the Bible is saying that when they were young, we loved them, we should keep loving them.
Okay.
And somebody used the word tolerating them. Even when the slim lady you marry, sometimes ago, has become horrible. We should still know that that is still the same lady and our love.
Thank you, sir, thank you, sir, thank you, sir. Please hold on, hold on, because of our time, hold on. The next, the next question is there, so you might want to contribute on that one. "In what manner do various cultures perceive the roles of husbands and wives in contrast to the perspectives presented in scripture?" Okay, we have mentioned what we believe are the perspectives, the views, the biblical standards. But what about culture? How does that come in? In the issue of submission, in the issue of considering or being considerate to your wife and all that we've mentioned? Yes, okay? Ikemjika.
There's a particular one that I wanted to say.
Don't say it, just answer this one. Because of time, because of time.
The contrast here.
Yes.
In most cultures, women are not respected.
Okay.
But here, we are asked to respect them. Respect goes beyond some of the things we do. But opinion, reasoning, even when the reasoning is not acceptable by you, you have to respect it. Even when what she said is not correct, it has to be respected. But in a culture, women are only to be seen and not to be heard.
Okay, thank you.
There's a difference.
Be more specific when you answer this question, please. Bring up one aspect of culture that you know. Yes, sir, your grace, yes, sir, your grace.
As I was growing up, as a young man married, my wife got pregnant. And she wanted to eat pandadiam. And she could not pound, all right? And I went and I did the pounding. And the people who were around said, "Huh?"
Umar Rapa.
The story went all over the place, from my relations. Say, "Ah, this woman that has married our son, he has turned his head." And see what he is doing, he is pounding yam for his wife. What the wife should be doing for him, all right? So these are cultures that we need to break from.
Yeah.
They inhibit the demonstration of the love of God as seen today from first Peter.
Yeah.
Do what you know is the scriptural conviction that you have.
Yeah.
Not what others are saying. And when they have talked and I did not even listen to anybody. And that thing died naturally because I knew the condition of my wife. I ate up, I ate up of that pandadiam. And when I was small, because my father had plenty of us who are boys, my father had eleven of us, all right? He will make us pound in the house. He will tell my mother, "You can't be pounding for self-priests, eleven children." So when we are coming back from farm like this, my mother will make sure the yam will just be getting ready.
Yeah.
You get what I'm saying?
No, I went through the same thing.
True, so I know how to pound. Why can't I do it for my wife?
Abomination really culturally. My uncle, Porajaku.
Thank you very much. I think where I came from, especially in Ibo land, the culture, some culture placed women at a very inferior position, not because we don't respect them. First, in Ibo land, when they plant anything, the first fruit they say belongs to the man. A woman will buy a goat and a cock, he give back to the first male and female. The man will take the man, belong to the man. Even gizzard belongs to the man.
Sure.
So, so I don't understand those culture, even in church. In church, some dioceses, women can never climb poop pit, even on a Monday Sunday.
Yeah.
So when we say, the culture is not, why do you talk, didn't church culture? Even in this church too, women are not ordained because of the culture.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very correct, sir, and it's in every culture, so it's not, it's not just limited to one part of the country. I, I think it is in the western world that it's a bit different. And the thing about it is that this same thing affects our children. Where you hear that boys don't enter the kitchen, only girls. Okay, so boys don't, don't, don't take care of the house, they don't sweep. Okay, they just, they just sit there and all of that. And then again, sometimes you want to train, you want, you want to under train the girl child. So if, if, if the boys are going to very good schools, get degrees, you know, up to PhD for the girl, just give her basic primary and secondary education and that's good enough, she'll be married off. Okay? And so this, this also rubs up on our children. Someone has said, we spend so much time on the girl child, making her a good wife, but we neglect the boys and make them terrible husbands. So you've got young people who are getting married and they can't do anything with their hands in the kitchen. So once their wife travels, they bring in somebody else. And I can tell you that once that somebody else comes in to help in the kitchen, that somebody else wants to take over the house. So all these things about culture that are not in consonance with the scripture, we must jettison them, so that we can raise our children in a way that they can become good husbands and good wives. Mama Fakwe.
I don't know whether this one can be other culture. You know, in some families, they will tell the wife, don't sleep with your husband, just stay in another room.
Yes.
Until you are ready to have another child.
Yes. It's, it's, it's culture man, it's culture.
The parents told them, especially the mother, don't go near your husband until you are ready to have another child.
Yes, it's culture man. So some of us have daddy's room and mommy's room. And we, we, we believe it's just ideal and it's okay. Some of us, when our wives are pregnant, we don't assist them in any way. We get whatever we taste, we call them house helps and nannies to us, to help them. Uh, some of us, our wives cannot ask us to do anything for them. Uh, just this morning, we're coming out and I, I was asked to resume at my normal station of hold my hair, tie the bag, turn it this way, carry this bag and do all. So I said, yes, it is my duty. But the one I'm really trying to make is, it says, consider them. Look after them, take care of them, and it gives the reasons. Weaker vessel, joint hair of grace with you. People of God, a man and a woman in the sight of God are equal. We are equal. Forget the things we say about culture and trying to put them lower than us. We are equal. God does not see the woman as being lower or inferior. That's why he says we are both joint hairs of God's grace. Yes, we have our roles, no doubt. We have our positions, no doubt. But God places the same value that he places on you as a man on the woman. Let's go on, because of time. Can someone read the, ah, no, okay, well, we have small questions, hard questions. So in which aspect of your marriage do you encounter challenges in practicing submission as a wife? Do you want to tell us, somebody? Is there one area where you really have problems, you have issues with submission? Someone would like to hear, so we can learn, if, if you're not going to be embarrassed sharing with us. Okay, my wife, she wants to expose me now.
In my own marriage, sometimes in the area of finance, my husband is, um, how do I put it? A charitable somebody who could cut off his head without thinking about it. He could have school fees that we need to pay and somebody cries into the office and is carried away and he will release that money. And so by the time he gets back home, he will try and start explaining. And this is the money we fasted and waited upon for the Lord. So when it comes to that, I collect that school fees and hold it. Because I know he's weak in that area. So in the area of finance, not always though, sometimes when we have that money for a particular project, I will hold on to it. So I find it difficult to submit in that area.
Thank you ma. Any other wife who wants to expose your husband? There's a hand at the back. Is that Mama Uru? I can't see the face well.
Praise the Lord.
Okay, that's the women of West.
I think, um, I was brought up to be a very assertive person. So getting married, I always think that before I share any opinion, I've thought so much about it and I believe it's right. And my husband being an Akiti man, who believes that whatever he says in the home is a finer. So I had a problem, I had a lot of challenges. I mean, especially in the early part of our marriage, submitting in this area. So when I feel something needs to be done and he says it's not going to be done, I feel so oppressed. And sometimes I'll go to the room, I'll be crying, what kind of marriage is this that I cannot express myself? So, and as a Christian, I think we always, we have this, uh, tradition, every year of our anniversary, we sit down to talk about what we don't, I mean, the challenges we have been having in the marriage. And year after year, I always tell him, I got married, I think I got married to my friend, but I can see I got married to a boss. So we, I think it went off for a long time in our marriage until we were able to get to a point that he will now say, okay, when he sees that I'm not happy about a decision, we'll talk about it, we'll pray about it until we are convinced about what to do.
Thank you ma. You know, she used the word assertive and sometimes like being a boss lady. But can I say this, that in marriage, I am not required to make my wife like myself. Or she trying to make me like herself, no. It won't work. We are two different individuals that have come together. God wants her life to challenge me to be a better person, reflecting the image, the character and the person of Christ. And then for my own life also to challenge her, so that she, she keeps all that God has given to her and made her to be in terms of gifts and all of that. But she reflects in that vessel, the glory, the person and the image of Christ. Fathers, it says, what challenges do you face in demonstrating consideration and respect towards your wife? Particularly considering her role as a weaker vessel and joint hair of grace with you? This is for men. What do you, what, what challenges do we face? Yes sir?
Thank you very much. On my own part, uh, I married a Christian leader.
Okay.
And, um, she plays that role of leadership, both in the fellowship and also in the house. So I was, at times I would expect her to keep quiet. And, um, let me
Let you do the talking.
Express. Uh, initial time was a difficult thing to me. Uh, then I started to understand her background. That even in public, when for instance, I would go and see a doctor, I'll be telling the doctor, this is what has happened to me and she would took over the matter. And narrates everything to the doctor. I'll look at her, are you the one sick? She would tell, then.
Fathers, are you, are you concoring?
And it's praise the Lord. So it was a lot more than I can ever say. Then I discovered that in the western culture and the Christian culture, it should not be an embarrassment for you to go to the doctor with your wife. Because she knows that something is wrong with you, which you don't know. And she will say it better. So I appreciated that challenge. And secondly, I also discovered that, uh, in our marriage, we oppose it. I'll be patient and she said, why don't you do this as a wait? Wait, it's not your time. Before I know it, she has gone to do it. I have to be considered and I know how to dismantle bit by bit and say, you shouldn't have done it now. So, I mean, there's other issues.
I understand, I understand sir.
As we are growing, this consideration has helped me, like we are saying, to accommodate and discover that she's a great helpmate to me on those areas. Thank you.
I, I'll take one more because of time. But, but you see, most of the fathers here were saying, oh yes, we go through the same thing in our house. Yes, brief, so that we can go on to.
Alright, thank you. Um, the, the issue is about challenge that I'm having.
Yes.
Um, I, I know I am older than my wife by age.
Are you, are you sure?
Yeah, I know, um. But sometimes she talks to me as a small boy. So.
So that's a challenge really.
And when she, when she does that, I find it difficult to, to understand any other thing or, or consider her or respect her because I'm older than her.
But Sam is okay. But, but but you know, the truth of the matter, the truth of the matter is that these wives that we have, they're not just our wives, our friends and sisters, they are also our mothers. They are. I mean, I mean, our, our, our daughter, she's eighteen, she's the last girl. But sometimes she talks to me like a mother does, even at her age. When I, when I'm sharing some things with her, the way she would respond and she would answer my question, is like a mother speaking to a son. So every woman has got that, you know, instinct and all of that kind of thing about being a mother. So Sam, please don't be offended, she's your mother. About Fakwe.
Thank you my lord, I think there is one point we are almost forgetting, the issue of being weaker vessel.
Yes.
I, I want to agree that Peter didn't mean to say physically, the woman is a weaker vessel.
Yeah.
From my own understanding, women are stronger. Yeah, because I share my experience with a couple of people. When I was doing my doctoral studies, I was only reading. My wife was also reading, studying. She would go to work, where in between, I want us to have additional children. And then she would be carrying the big belly. And she would still come back and I would expect her also to prepare even the meal. I was only doing one thing, she was doing three. And somebody would tell me, she's the weaker, I used to say, I'm the weaker vessel. Because we need to give recognition to our mothers that they are the stronger vessel, weaker in the sense of emotion.
Yeah.
It was from the emotional perspective that we look at our wives as weaker vessel because that is traceable to Eve. Eve couldn't accommodate what she should have accommodated, she was easily warmed up. And as a result of that, she led humanity to whatever we are today.
Yeah.
And the same thing is still applicable, they are emotionally, uh,
Weak.
triggered off.
Yeah.
And so it is in that respect that we hand do the women very, very carefully as weaker vessel. So we give kudos to our mothers, you are not weak, you are strong, you are agile and we thank God for your lives.
Thank you your grace, thank you your grace. You know, research has shown that women can multitask much more than men would ever do. Number two, a woman can keep three, four, five thoughts in her mind at the same time and still be on the sixth one. And she brings them out at the right time. And that's how they can take care of us as their husbands, take care of the children, take care of the home, take care of the grandchildren and when God allows, even the great grandchildren. We must move on. The last question there is, in what way should husbands show honor to their wives? I think we've touched a bit of it. The introduction there on the teaching just talks about that marriage is difficult, there's no doubt about that, but not impossible. One of my friends says, each time we go to church and we're having a wedding. So she says, hm, see the way the bride is laughing and smiling. Little does she know that she's just entering into kiri kiri. Just to show how difficult it can be, but not impossible. And also given the fact that the man and his wife, or the woman and the man are from different backgrounds, created by God differently, emotionally, mentally, physically, like Baba Fakwe has said. So this also complicates the issue of marriage. Alright, so Peter also mentions the issue of general submission in his text, calling Christians to be submissive, to be under authority, to leaders, to masters, to government, to pay taxes and to do all of that. And why was he saying this to them? It's the fact that they are now Christians, they are now believers, they are now born again and they need to live by example. In some ways, isn't it funny how we also live when we get to the traffic light? And once it turns red, red means what actually? Stop, but in Nigeria, red means go. And green means whatever. And so someone, someone shared a story with me, he said, this was a guy driving his car and he got to the traffic light and it turned red, so he stopped. And so this guy pulled out from behind him and he drove past him while the light was still red. And what he did, you know what he did to him? He turned and did like this to him. And on his car, at the bumper at the back was the sticker, Jesus loves you. And yet he beat traffic and then still did this. So it's like, you don't get sense, Abi, go. But Peter says, no. We need to submit. Obey civil laws, pay taxes. If you work with a master that's difficult and hard, get to work on time. How many civil servants go to work at eight thirty or nine, whatever time they go and they sign the register for seven thirty, but they got there by ten? How many civil servants don't go to work all the days of the month, but wait to collect a salary at the end of the month? And they say, there are people like that also in the church. Peter says, no, we must obey. And so he brings that same thought into marriage. And so he brings that same thought into marriage, where he says, "Wives, submit, yield, and all of that to your husbands, but he says to your own husband." People of God, none of us has the right to demand submission from another person's wife as we demand of our wife. Which means that if a husband tells the wife not to come to church, Your Grace, even the primate doesn't have that power to tell the wife, "Come to church." She's under the husband. The primate, the bishop, the pastor, whoever, is just the spiritual leader. But Peter says to us, in the house, in the home, the head of that woman, the one in charge, the one who calls the shots. And sometimes even the church has helped to put a wedge between a husband and a wife. Because the pastor in church legislates for the wife, and she obeys and submits to him. And sometimes I ask the question, some of these women or wives come and kneel for us, to greet us, and I ask, "Do you kneel to greet your husband? You submit to me, you venerate me, you respect me, you treat me like one God. Is that how you treat your husband? Is the one who demands your first submission?" That's what the Bible says. And so Peter tries to lay that. And he says, "Even when the man does not believe, is an unbeliever, he says, give him the submission. Even if it's hard and difficult, give him the submission." Of course, we are now saying to young people, now, if it's violent, if he beats you up and wants to kill you, yes, you submit, but there is a way to deal with that submission as well. There isn't time to do all of that. Peter also says to them, "So that they may be won over by what, not by words." When I married my wife, I told myself, "Wow, we're gonna have a beautiful marriage, we're not corral, I'm a gentleman, she's a nice lady, and there won't be any issue at all." Little did I know, that before I say one, she would say ten. So I said, "Listen." Before I knew it, it said I had been issues. Peter says, "Words will not win this man over." Because women like to talk. Words won't win him over, but character, your behavior. And it goes to say, "It is the inner beauty." And he says, "Don't focus on those outward appearances, because women love to look good." The day we parked out of the old bishop's court to the new one, so I told my wife, I said, "Once it is dedicated, I will sleep in it." That I don't dedicate a project and not begin to use it. She was like, "Okay, no problem, we'll do that." It took me approximately, approximately one hour, no, less than one hour, really. It took me about forty-five minutes to pack all my stuff, my clothes, my car sock, my shoes, and all of that, and I put them in the room. Now, it took my wife six months to completely move out of the old house to the new house. Because every now and then, she says to me, "Could you go to the old house, open that room?" In fact, she practically locked one room against me and against everybody else. And then she said, "Go to that room, you will find this and find that and bring." So women are like that, it's how they are. So Peter says, "Don't measure only on the outward, but let it be the inner beauty of a gentle and quiet spirit." And he says, "You have an example, that is Sarah. Can you follow that example? Can you follow that lifestyle to win your husband?" And people, mothers, please listen, it's not only an unbelieving husband. Because there could be a man who is the born-again child of God, but there are areas where he does not yet believe, and he needs you to show him that belief or that reason to believe. It could be in investment, it could be concerning finance, it could be concerning family, whatever it is, he needs you to show him that light to believe. And all this must happen, like Peter says, which Paul corroborates in Ephesians 5:22-24. He says, "Wives, submit yourselves to your own husbands as you do to the Lord, for the husband is the head of the wife, as Christ is the head of the church." So the submission is unto Christ first, then in the light of Christ. People of God, I mean, my wife knows that if she looks at my face sometimes, she wouldn't love me again. If she considers what I do sometimes, she wouldn't love me again. But for the sake of Christ, that she looks at the mercy and the forgiveness and the grace of Christ over my life, then she loves me. And can I add very quickly, love is not a feeling. There are days you wake up in the morning, you feel nothing towards your spouse, but anger, resentment, and you can name it. But love is an act of our will. In other words, we deliberately determine intentionally to do what, to love. So Peter says, "In Christ, these things are possible. When the two people are born again, when the two of them have come to know Jesus as their Lord and precious Savior, and they are all growing in Him, they are all struggling, running towards the perfect man in Christ Jesus." Then it comes to the husbands, which we have as the husband's role. Ephesians 5:1 says, "We must submit to one another out of reverence for Christ." So there is a place or a call for both husband and wife to do what? To submit first to Christ and then to one another. Which means that in marriage, the husband is also asked to defer to his wife's wisdom, to his wife's ingenuity. And when the wife has a superior wisdom or superior suggestion or superior view, submit. Do you know that I say to my wife, and of course she knows, once we got married, I say, "Look, I'm your husband, I'm older than you, that is all through, but please, I'm your friend. Can we relate as friends?" And so I tell people in church that, you see, this thing you call bishop that I have by the grace of God, I say, "It's only in church that I'm bishop." So when my wife, when she says, "Want to invite our Father in God, blah, blah, blah," then she goes like this, and then I smile. I say, "Other one, I show." When things are good in our house, my name is honey. When I hear honey, everything is fantastic. When things are on the fire, eh? Then she calls me by my tribal name, "Kaiyade." It's a bad day. So the man is asked to submit also, but like I said, to Christ first and then to his wife. So all the roles and responsibilities of a man are all there, love his wife, we've mentioned that and everything. But Peter also tries to identify and outline. He says, "The man should do what? Dwell with her." And for me, dwelling with her, living with her, is to be physically present with her on the same bed, in the same room, eating together as much as possible, helping her enter the kitchen and come out of the kitchen. I began to make some soup for my wife, and she tells me, "Now, this is your soup, now correct." So she asks me, "Are you ready to make another one for me?" And I say, "Well, if I have the time, I will make it." But that is living together. I remember a few years ago, I went for a journey, like Baba Kaya mentioned yesterday. And I returned, and I spent one night, and I was packing the following morning. Then my wife called, "Where are you?" I said, "I'm in the office." So I came back to the room. She now said, "I'm tired." And I was like, "You're tired of what, of me?" She said, "I'm lonely." I said, "Okay, I'm sorry, but I have to go for this trip. The tickets are booked already." And truly, she was literally, like I could see in her eyes, tears. It was like, "I have not had you for myself for a while, I need you." And that point, I knew that I was a stranger in my house. Because I was coming in, emptying my bag, repacking that same bag, and just say, "Hello, how are you?", blah, 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 I wasn't there. People of God, it's not just invitations alone, the office is there. Not just the office alone, visitors who come to the house. Not just visitors alone, meetings that we schedule. And we never consider that there's a woman in the house who needs us. You know, there are times when I come back to the house, my wife has a load of gist, both the good, the bad, and the ugly. And when I'm tired of listening to the gist, I just keep saying, "Oh, I see, oh, yes. Ah, interesting, ah, wonderful, is that so? Oh." But at least here, as somebody, she's pouring all that gist on top. It's important, dwelling, living, having that relationship, having that fellowship. Brothers and sisters is also talks about having that sexual intimacy. Sometimes, when we get married, after some time, romance leaves the marriage. We forget how we used to cut, or how we cutted her, or whatever, before we got married. Those sweet words we used to say, how we used to hold hands, how we used to do all those things that we did. Now we say, "No, I'm old, I'm an old man." Love never grows old. Doesn't matter how old you are, you can still fall in love and be in love all over again with your spouse. Peter says, "A husband should be considerate," we have mentioned that, "should know his wife, understand his wife, study her, study her, who is this woman?" By the grace of God, married for twenty-six years, I am still studying my wife. I am still unable to unravel her completely, you know why? Because there are days when she would just say some things, or do some things, or bring up some things, and I'm asking myself, "I don't understand this." Because that is who she is. It is my work to study her emotions, to study her mood, to study her feelings. And can I say, brothers, fathers, it's not too much to know the details of your wife's briefs, underwears. It's not something embarrassing to know the measurement for your wife. But the one that makes me laugh most of the time is when we are talking in the public, "Okay, so your son, yes, so how old is he?" Then you turn to your wife, "Honey, how old is he?" Or it's the child's birthday you didn't know, and it is your wife that tells you, "Have you called our son, have you called our daughter?" I say, "Calling for what?" She said, "Today is his birthday." So there are some information, some statistics that we need to know about our wives. And when you buy them those things, you'll just be amazed that the one you spend a hundred thousand purchasing and the one you spend maybe just ten thousand naira buying for the wife, because it's something that is intimate and romantic, she appreciates it more. So she says, "Oh, this man traveled all the way to wherever he traveled to and had me in mind." Know your wife, who is she? And it's not for you to know somebody else's wife or to know all women. Like some men will say, "Ah, I know women, women are like this." No, your wife is different. Who is your wife? What are those things that excite her? Those things that make her come alive? They may be simple and ordinary things. Peter says, "Naturally weaker than men," Baba Fakui has talked about that, "Women are fellow hairs of grace with us," I've mentioned something about that, "they are co-hairs, value." God places a value on the women, like He places on us. Which means we ourselves as men must do what? Place a value on our wives. One pastor was in church and wanted to raise funds. So he told the members of the church, "Please give generously, please give it all of your heart, and please give according to how beautiful your wife is, please give." So people came, some gave one million, some gave two million, some a hundred thousand. One man came and gave five naira. So pastor said, "No, you can't do that, why would you do this?" He said, "Pastor, listen, if you see my wife, you will give me change." Fathers, do you know that it is the value you place on your wife that your mother will place on her? Is the value you place on your wife that your siblings will place on her? Is the value you place on your wife that your workers in the dowsers will place on her? Is the value you place on her that everybody else around will place on her? So if you devalue her like a currency, they also will help you do what? Devalue her. So Peter says, "We must take all of this seriously." Then of course, the consequence of not doing all of this, Peter puts it to us, he says, "Your prayers will be hindered, your prayers will not go beyond the ceiling. You will do the vigils, you will do the twenty-one days fasting with forty-eight days before the year ends, nothing will happen. Why? Because you have not dealt well with the wife of your youth." That's who she is, she's the wife of your youth. Even if you are whatever age you say you are, she's still the wife of your youth. And you know, love is not based on what you see physically. Because if you follow physical beauty, like they would say, there are fifty shades of gray, fifty shades of blue, and a hundred shades of whatever. You know, women that have made us understand color. When there's a wedding, they say there is cockroach brown, there is sky blue, there is... What other one? Ocean blue, there's burgundy and what have you. And so it is that we have these shades of women. Like somebody said, that story writer, novel writer, he says, "The beautiful ones are not yet born." So polygamists who keep marrying more wives, they are just following beauty. "Oh, she looks beautiful, she looks attractive," so they marry. But you know, if we're in Christ, our beauty is renewed day in and day out, even as we age, even as we age. And we love to still be together with each other, holding hands and talking together and sharing together. Whenever I am out around and I come back, like I said to you, the first G partner for my wife is me. When I come back also, the first person I want to tell all of those gossips to is also my wife. She's my partner. We love to talk together and to stay together. And age shouldn't stop this. So Peter gives us all of that. Can we go to the last set of questions because of our time, the last set? These are the hands, how can I obey? For husbands, what are some ways you could treat your wives with respect that is meaningful to her? That is meaningful to her. Not just general, but your wife specific. What ways do you think you can treat your wife? That's your wife, my wife's name is Biodu, Deborah. I know what I would do now, just now, and she will open all her teeth. She would, I know, please, can we answer? Anybody? We don't want to make it something you take home, just share with us, one person, and we'll move on to the next question. Yes, now I'm begging the men. If I don't find a man to answer, I would then choose one by myself. Okay, Baba Kenneth, oh, Lafayette is there, you haven't spoken. Baba Kenneth, after you, Lafayette will speak.
So when we know the truth, the truth will set us free. Just to say that, if I want my wife, to surprise her, somebody gave me something yesterday, money, Christmas gift. So I asked her to keep it. So when we get to the hotel, and I said, "Let me see how much is the..." She showed me, I said, "Okay, you can keep it for yourself." She was so excited, she said, "Ah, you mean, hmm..." She was so excited, she said, ah, you mean, hmm, so...
You're correct, sir. You're very correct, sir.
So I discovered that, not only that, that every time you come in with a sum of money and just say, this is for you, she will feel very happy.
Thank you, sir.
Some of the, some of the things that my wife appreciates and I know that when I do them, she feels good. Includes whenever she put on a new dress, make a good hairdo, she wants me to appreciate it. When I come home and meet her walking and I just pass quietly as if I didn't even notice that somebody is there, she gets offended.
Yeah, yeah.
So she wants me to know that somebody has been laboring.
Yeah, for you to come and see.
And then you come, you look at it and say, wow, you are doing a great job.
You're, you're correct, sir.
Thank you so much.
Our mothers want us to appreciate their meals, their cooking, appreciate their hair, their new hair, appreciate their dress. Can I also add, they want us to be led. And truly, if you pray, you'll be led. There's a day I came back home and I transferred a hundred thousand to my wife's account. So she saw it, normally she would ask, is that part of savings or school fees or upkeep? So I said, no, it's for you. She said, wow, wow. Say, for what, why, why did you do it? I said, truly, I was led and that's the truth. I was in the office and the priest said to me, give it to her. And she said to me, truly, I had a need and I was looking for how to meet that need. And you just send that money. It's a way to be considerate, it's a way to care about their needs and to show them love. He says, the other one is for, is for men, I guess. That's the second question on the hands before we go to the last question and then conclusion. He says, yeah, for wives, yeah, no, wives, sorry. What specific actions do you need to facilitate or that will facilitate or ease in practicing submission? What, what specific actions do you think you need to do now that will facilitate the ease in practicing submission from you? Mama Ikwe, is that you?
Thank you, my lord. For me personally, each time there's need, I don't submit to the army officer, but I submit to God in him and I call him my God. I always see God in him, even I've started teaching my children, say he is my, the head. I like the way the Yoruba so call it, olowo rimio. I'll, I'll treat him like that. So submission is simple because I submit to God.
Thank you, ma. If you can submit to God, it becomes easy to submit to. Thank you, sir, thank you, sir. Can I take one more? One more for the, for the last set of questions. There's a hand there. Mama Pangin.
All I need to do to my husband is hug him.
Hug him.
And kiss him.
And kiss him. Thank you, ma. Put back that romance in the marriage. Now, the last set of questions, help, how are my relationships? So who will hold you accountable on these matters? A new action plan? Just, just answer that in your heart, who is going to hold you accountable? Is that somebody that, that would hold you accountable? That, that can, you know, say and see that you follow those plans? For me, it's our children. I remember one or two years ago, there was something that, that had happened between myself and my wife and I felt pained about it. And so our son was in the room with us, was, was in the towel room. And so, and I said to him, I said, Toby, could you excuse us? I want to talk with your mommy. So you know what he said to me? He said, say what you want to say here. And I was like, okay. I couldn't say anything. I knew that I could not afford to embarrass myself before him and to give him a bad impression of what marriage is all about. But again, that also taught me something. That, look, you can't be angry about everything all the time. If something goes wrong, let it slide, let it go. You don't have to bring it up and talk about it. And you know, when we do that as husbands, it's exasperating. Not just that, it also kills love. I've got a, a little problem, they call it OCD. I mean obsessive compulsive disorder. So in my house, everything must be straight, the chairs must be straight, everything must be neat, everything must be, you know? So one day I traveled and once I traveled, my wife tells the children, your daddy is coming back in the next four, five hours. Set the house well, you know when he comes. So that day I came and as soon, as soon as I entered the house, the first thing I noticed was the, the chair was not set properly, so I went and, and moved it and put it well. So my second son, Tommyde, said, so that's all you can see? You can't even tell us, well done, we've been working since morning, you can't say, well done. So, so for me, they're the ones that hold me accountable because they can confront me with the issues and tell me where I'm not getting it right. He says, is there someone you plan to immediately share this new truth with? Who is that couple that you have in mind? I'm sure as we have discussed this, there'll be people in your mind that you want to share these things with. Going forward, what can you do to help your children understand Christian marriage better? What do you need to start doing right, doing properly to help them not have the views and the impressions of those young people that we talked about at the beginning of this teaching? How do you intend to use your office and leadership to encourage godly homes in your diocese? Now, this is heavy for me really. Because all the people in the diocese, you are their father, mommy is their mother. Is that something you want to do now? Is there a program? Is there an activity, is there, is there, is there an, an event? Is there a prayer concern you want to raise using the office of the bishop and the office of the bishop's wife? Can I get a response for that at least, maybe one or two quickly? What you want to do quickly? Is there any action plan? I should go home, not just this teaching alone from yesterday, all through from morning, the Bible study to the skill training, the mission work and this morning and the rest of what we're going to cover today and tomorrow. Is there, is there something you already thinking you want to do? Anybody wants to share with us something you want to take back home and start immediately? Yes, Baba Lawi.
Praise the Lord. Well, I have an intention that by the grace of God, I get to our diocese, I'm going to organize a seminar like this, something like of this nature, using this, all these...
The notes there.
Yes, to teach my clergy and their wives, go through it together and I lead them through.
Thank you, sir. Any woman? Yes, ma. Mama, Mama Anoha. Microphone, this way. Okay, this way. Okay, that's Mama, women are west, but let's take Mama Anoha first.
Thank you, sir. I think for me, this Bible study is an answered prayer. Because as bishops, archbishops, church leaders, let me use that word. We have so many families that are ailing, that are in pain and that are lonely. And most of all, we take it for granted. I know that no bishop here or archbishop want to be a failure. No family here want to be in crisis. But, but Bible says we are not, we are not, we are not, I mean, struggling. Our battle is not of flesh and blood. And there is this tendency for the devil to make sure we don't succeed. And where does it start? The home. I know that most, every man here saw this woman as a beautiful woman, as a child of God, as somebody that will help him to succeed in life. And the Bible says, when two or three are gathered in my name, say anything and it comes to pass. Most of us are living in, what do you call it? Places they were dedicated to idols and they are still fighting. And unfortunately, we don't understand our environment. We don't understand what we are called to be and what we are called to do.
Because of time, man, so is there something?
Sorry, sir. This is the pain I'm having, I thank God for this Bible study, that God has decided to liberate us. And even should understand through this Bible study that as a husband and a wife, when we hold our hands together in that environment, in unity, in love, some of the struggles we are facing in the diocese will be resolved. Praise the Lord.
Yes, I resonate with that, ma. And apart from that, what you have said is also the fact that as we hold hands together as a couple, the clergy are seeing that. The members of the church also see that. I mean, somebody once said, he said, actually, look at the chancellor, you see the clergy there, he says, they are all fighting each other. They're all fighting themselves. Baba, Baba, I say, what about us bishops? Mama, women are west, the last one, ah, my uncle.
Praise the Lord. Yeah, since yesterday, this has been going on in my mind about all we have been discussing, about us laying a good foundation in the home for our children to copy from. But the other thing that has been in my mind and which is something I'm looking forward to start doing now is the fact that contrary to what we have been saying, there are parents with solid homes and their children have broken homes. I know of a couple, solid home, good Christian, and two of their children have divorced. And that brings me, I mean, brings to my mind that our challenges are quite different from the challenges of this generation. In our own time, we look at the marriage of our parents and we want to be like them. I did a research recently about parents who are parenting children in different millenniums. And I discovered that ideas differ and they look at our ideas as old school and they have so many other examples around them that they are copying from.
From the Western world and all the...
From the Western world, even from our own world around here. Culture is changing.
Dynamic.
Dynamic, so many things are changing. In our own times, I'm not sure anybody here ever heard of sex toys. And now, even in marriages, husbands are buying sex toys for their wives. And we know what that is leading to. The strategy of the devil is still the same, but the scheme is different. I discussed with my husband that our marriage counseling scheme need to change to include all these things so that the children can be aware of them before they step into marriages. In our own time, women, our needs are very limited. Our ambition is very limited. We are not ambitious to become ministers. We are not ambitious because we want to become a manager in the office and we are putting everything into it to be able to get there. But with the children of this generation, a woman wants to be the president of the country.
She's got a career.
Yes, she has a career and she has a dream, she has what she wants to be. And therefore, if the man stands in her way, she's ready to walk out of that marriage so that she can be able to achieve what she wants.
Thank you, ma. Just hurt to call you, thank you, ma. You see, the issue of a woman having a career, it's something that in this age and time, we can't stop.
Yes.
And so it means that when you have a daughter who has been trained and gone to school, you want to encourage her to have a career.
But you also teach her to know how to manage that career alongside with her marriage.
And I, and I will say, sorry, but I have to stop you because of time. But I would say that she also had to find the will of God in a man that can support that career. Because more often than not, what we have is that men pursue their careers, women don't get to pursue that same career that God has given them. So you send a child to good schools, they go abroad, get degrees and when they get married, all they ever do for whatever number of years they are alive and married is they cook their certificates in the pot every day. That is ungodly, that is not correct.
So we need to prepare the women to pray and be sure of who they are going to marry.
Definitely, we have to do that.
And during counseling, we need to talk about these so that the men who are coming from background that they don't teach them to cook, we know how to cope with such women.
Thank you, ma. Praise the Lord. Thank you, ma. So the, the honest lies on us as parents to raise both the boy and the girl and to raise them in the fear of God, in the image of God and to know what God is asking them to do. Because truly speaking, it doesn't make sense, I have one daughter with two boys and I'm training her to be the best that she can be. And I won't let her marry a man who won't let her pursue her career, no, I won't. So she needs to pray to get a man who understands her career and both of them can manage their careers and still raise their children well and still fulfill God's call and purpose over their lives. People of God, we must draw the curtain, but listen to the last question. In what ways will you encourage godly elderly couples within your church to assist newlywed couples in establishing a strong foundation for their marriage? I think we must rejig our premarital counseling that we do in our churches. We must check all over again, marriage seminars, are we doing them and how are we doing them? We must lay that solid foundation. We must talk to our children early in life about marriage and what marriage is all about. We must tell them about the time and the age to get married and what marriage entails. And so it is actually for me, it's my life, the way I live with my wife, with their mother and the things I do in that home and the impressions that I create that will set them to run and to know what marriage is all about. I believe that it is through me that they interpret the gospel, interpret the Bible, the things I say and the things I do, and it's very difficult. May God help us in Jesus' name. Our conclusion, can I have someone read it for us? Somebody who likes to read that conclusion, please do read it.
Marriage assists so that through it humanity can serve God through children, through faithful intimacy and through properly ordered sexual relationship between a man and a woman. This union is pattern upon the union of God with his people who are his bride, Christ with his church. Therefore, our marriage homes are expected to have a positive effect on discipleship and training for our children, those who live with us and all those who are, we interact with on daily basis. Christian marriage is not merely about staying in love, it's about staying in love. It is about covering, covenant keeping and the main reason... And the main reason it is about covenant keeping is that God designed the relationship between a husband and his wife to restore the relationship between Christ and the church. This is the deepest meaning of marriage. And that is why ultimately the roles of hership and submission are so important. If our marriages are going to tell the truth about Christ and the church, we cannot be indifferent to the meaning of hership and submission. Within marriage, husbands are to exercise a role of self-sacrificial hership and wise apostle or godly submission to their husbands. This institution points us to our hope of Christ returning to claim His pride, making marriage a living picture of the gospel of grace.
Thank you, ma. Can we say the memory of us together? Ephesians 5:21. One, two, go. Thank you, let's pray. "Please hold the hand of your spouse. Ask for God's healing and divine touch in your marriage."